And reopen this meeting because of the speedy opening of this meeting, I didn't have a chance to do a land acknowledgement. So I'd just like to say how squamish up me and I also like to start it with a little bit of gratitude for the land that holds us and nourishes us. The waters that are falling from the sky and rehydrating our soils. Thank you very much after this dry season that we've had. The air for bringing winds of change and information and also the fires for warming and enlightening. Okay, so we had an adoption of the agenda already, but I would like to make a motion to defer the second item in the agenda, which is the neighborhood node commercial zoning amendment. I'd like to defer that to a future meeting. Seconded, thank you. And I'll be seconded by councillor, by Mayor Hertford. What's that? For time. Okay, all in favor? Okay, so councillor Stoner opposed. Okay, so councillor Stoner is opposed. Okay, so we'll move on to our first item of the agenda, which is the Housing Squamish Contribution Agreement for 2025 Annual Reporting. And that is brought to us by Ms. Sarah Ellis and accompanied by Mr. Velanischkis. Thank you. Take it away, Sarah.
Hey, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Sarah Ellis and I'm Executive Director of Squamish Community Housing Society, Housing Squamish. I'm joined here in chambers today by my board chair, Kirby Brown, who's here representing our 11-person board, made up of representatives from Squamish's four local social service and housing providers, Squamish Nation, District of Squamish and the community at large. I am grateful to be here today to present to you our annual update on Housing Squamish's work in the past year delivering housing to our community, one year into our five-year contribution agreement with the district. First, I'll acknowledge that we do our work on the traditional and unceded lands of the Squamish Nation. Reconciliation with First Nations is a Housing Squamish core value and we work in close partnership with the nation through the Heem Tuscomish Housing Society in support of their mission to bring all Squamish Nation members home within a generation. In this presentation, I'll provide an overview of our achievements in the past year tackling housing need in our community and an update on our partnership with the district. There will also be some time at the end for some Q and A. First, a brief introduction for anyone new to our work. Housing Squamish is an independent, community-based nonprofit society created in 2021 through a partnership between the district, local affordable housing providers, Squamish Nation and community leaders looking to tackle Squamish's affordability challenges. Our vision sees housing as a platform for a strong, resilient community, which we will achieve by catalyzing housing solutions across the spectrum of housing need with a focus on housing the local workforce. Our mission is critical because we know the housing challenge in our community is real. In the past five years, Squamish experienced over 50% escalation in rents and home prices, putting market housing out of reach for many in our community. The district's housing needs report suggests over 1,500 homes are needed in the next four years by 2030 to address major gaps in housing availability in our community, including rental and ownership housing for working households. In our work, we're confronted with this need and applications for below-market rental homes in the district. We received nearly 200 unique applications for eight homes at Highline late last year from working families based in our community earning low and moderate incomes. Just last month, we received 45 applications for two deeply affordable one-bedroom units meant for singles at Finch Drive. Many of these are people working full-time jobs who otherwise can't afford to live alone in existing housing in our community. 10 years ago, many of these households could have found housing on the market. Now they're looking to below-market housing to be able to stay in Squamish. With this need in mind, our housing will aim to bridge this gap, generally serving working households earning a broad range of workforce incomes who live in Squamish and don't require ongoing services and supports directly attached to their housing. In line with the district's perpetually affordable housing policy, our tenancy policy prioritizes households where at least one member works a minimum of 20 hours a week for a Squamish-based business. We know there's tremendous need among working households in our community with many facing difficult trade-offs in their housing choices. Housing security means peace of mind and stability for these households and has direct benefits for our local employers and economy and the diversity, vibrancy and resilience of our community as a whole. To meet this need, our goal is to have 300 homes under operation or in the development process by 2029. And in just a short time, we've already made real progress toward our core mission. We finished lease-up of eight homes at Highline at the start of the year, bringing our total portfolio to 48 homes under management. We applied for over $5 million in funds for a deep energy retrofit at Tantalus Manor, an existing 40-unit rental apartment that we purchased with Heem Housing through the province's Rental Protection Fund. And this work will benefit residents, reduce greenhouse gas emissions from the building and fund much-needed capital work. We also secured $500,000 in additional pre-development funds for 100 affordable rental homes on a district-owned site at Government Road and applied in July for $34 million in construction funding for the project through the B.C. Housing Community Housing Fund. This year, we also worked on scaling up our internal capacity and exploring new service and business opportunities. We did a full governance and policy review and produced our first fully audited financials. We partnered with Diamond Head Development on leasing up 34 below-market homes secured under the district's affordable housing policy at the Artemis at Finch Drive. And finally, we continue to grow and scale our internal resources and knowledge, building an extensive and deep network of partners and experts to support our work. The sum total of these achievements underscores our value to the community, taking the district's investment in our work and leveraging them to access partner funds to deliver the housing we deeply need in Squamish. And in less than three years, we're already showing what's possible. We've taken the district's investment to date of around 1.5 million in operating funds and leveraged over $11 million in confirmed senior government and partner funds to acquire and develop housing. This is a significant return on investment in a short period of time and we believe an even higher return is possible as we grow and scale. One year into our five-year contribution agreement with the district, we are on track toward our short-term goals and long-term mission. We're also prioritizing responsible stewardship of the district's investment and have provided detailed financial statements in our reporting to staff. While we are confident in our team and our strategic plan, we also know that we are in unprecedented times with a shifting economy and fiscal environment for our work. We will continue to need support from council and staff and our partners and the community at large in our work as we move forward, including unlocking land and partnerships to develop and acquire homes, engaging early in development opportunities and collaborating on policy work related to housing. Above all, though, we are deeply grateful for the trust in our work and our mission from the district, staff and the community and will continue to work hard in service of our community in the coming year. Thanks, and I'll take any questions.
Well, thanks for that. I also wanted to apologize for not acknowledging the wonderful Mr. Kirby Brown is also here today. And yeah, with that, let's open it up for questions. Councilor, any questions? I'll start with Mayor Hertford.
Sorry, just a bit of housekeeping. If council, if you could have your cameras on, that's all. I'll hold my questions after.
Councillor French?
My device doesn't seem to be able to find any Wi-Fi signals, so I'm out of commission. If I had a camera to turn on, I would turn it on. I am curious to know about the composition of the Board of Directors. Am I correct in saying the board isn't completely full at this point? Could you talk to us a little bit about the state of the board?
Yeah, so our bylaws create the potential for 12 members on the Board of Directors. There are designated seats for the District of Squamish, Squamish Nation, four community service providers and then members at large. One of the members at large is required to be a person living in affordable housing in the community. That seat has been vacated since the summer.
And I have similar question about staffing. Are you at full staffing at this point? What's staffing looking like into the next one, two, three years?
Yeah, so the budget that we provided to council last year had capacity for three full-time staff, including myself and then a part-time program coordinator. We've hired all those roles and that's as much staff, permanent staff as we expect to have through our five-year contribution agreement unless we're able to resource more staffing through other contributions. We do have a part-time person on contract supporting a project and it's being paid out of that project.
Thanks, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Yes, councillor Anderson?
I guess following up on councillor French's area of interest, your Board of Directors. In your strategic planning, you'll no doubt identify areas of expertise that will be desirable for your board, urban land development, people in the real estate industry. Are you comfortable that you have that pattern of expertise available on your board? Do you deliberately target certain areas of expertise that you see desirable for your work?
Yes, thanks for the question. Yeah, so we do have specific areas of expertise that are targeted for the members at large. And right now, we do have really good representation from the development and building industry and development management and property operations, which are really good to have, especially in this early work on our projects.
Thank you.
Councillor Stoner?
Thank you. Through the chair, I feel bad taking up time because I have the pleasure of sitting on the board and working closely with these folks, but I do have a few questions and thank you for the annual report. My first question is around. I'm wondering if you could speak a little bit to this. So as provincial legislation has changed, and this might be to Jonas as well, around the ability to collect community amenity contributions and are moving away from the ability to collect CACs for affordable housing into the transition of amenity cost charges. Just wondering if we have given some thought around how that has been one of the primary streams for which we have either created a pipeline for affordable housing that we were going to pass off to the housing society and/or collect cash and lieu to provide to the Affordable Housing Reserve. Both of those things seem to be drying up a little bit, both in the way that we collect those funds as well as kind of the development scenarios that we're operating in right now. I was wondering if you, either of you have given any thought to like how we might be able to shift or what that might, how that might shift the way we work.
Thank you. That's an excellent question. It is a shifting landscape in terms of regulation and legislation in that we can't collect cash and lieu as we have been in the past. So I think for the future, we're looking more at negotiations on larger development applications because that CUC policy will still be in play. It's just now a rezoning policy. Or it will be once council approves it as such. And I think the other aspect that we are keeping our eye on is the potential for land dedications for affordable housing because that is becoming one of the main issues for delivery of public housing in the future. And so that's how I would see development playing a role in that. Our budgeting process already captures sort of replacement of development contributions with taxation to the Affordable Housing Reserve for kind of the medium term. But it is an uncertain future in terms of gathering those contributions from development.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. And just something we'll keep our eye on. My other question was around lessons learned, I believe. The Artemis Building was the first experience we've had in terms of actually doing lease-up. And so I'm just curious about some lessons learned there around the perpetual affordable housing policy, its application. And if we can expect that that might be a continued area of work, both for the housing society for lease-up and then also where we stand in terms of reviewing annual covenants that are on the other properties that we've secured through affordable housing covenants. So Sea and Sky, for example, has 55 units. I believe they're required to do an annual submission of, what is the form called? It's in the back of the perpetual affordable housing policy. I can see it in my head, but I don't.
Statutory declaration.
Statutory declaration. That's the magic word I'm looking for. Thank you, Sarah. Who reviews those? What does that look like? Is, yeah, that's a combination of questions there.
I'll maybe start with the first part, just on our learnings through doing lease-up of units secured through housing agreements largely informed by the PAH policy. And so we've done it now on two projects. So Highline, which were projects, which is units that we manage and then also leased up and then Artemis, where we were only involved and continue to be involved in eligibility testing for people moving into those units. The policy obviously has looked a little bit different in terms of how it's laid out in housing agreements. And I think that just reflects shifting implementation over time. But I'd say by and large, it's consistent in how it's, how we're interpreting it in housing agreements, which is great. So we're not having to majorly shift the way we do things from one project to the next. The intent of the policy to prioritize working households at moderate incomes, I think, is being by and large achieved, which is also great, given that these can often be really kind of challenging policies to land the first few times. I think the people who are living in the units really reflect the intent of the policy. Application to application, we are running into some, I'll call them challenges, but I think they have to do with just the nature of work. We're learning that the notion of workforce and even defining things around what does it mean to work for a Squamish-based business? Where does in-person work fall into this? Where does work maybe in the community, but maybe slightly outside Squamish fall in? How do we want to, around income calculation as well? We are finding some potential mismatches between some of the incomes that are specified for different unit types and then what we tend to see associated with working households. So I'd say big picture, the policy makes sense and is working. And then I think small picture, there's definitely some areas where we can inform future agreements. And we're hearing a lot of openness from staff to work with us on that. So we're, and obviously it's ongoing with staff too, where I know Jonas, we're emailing whenever we have questions about interpretation and it's a back and forth, making sure that we're interpreting things correctly. So that's what we're learning and look forward to hopefully working on the Centennial Way project next year as well.
I don't have much to add. It's also a learning experience for us. We haven't had a lot of new affordable housing projects complete and go for that sort of first year of operation where the stat declarations are then due.
One quick follow-up on that. Is it, I have a mixed memory as to whether we have it included in our housing agreements as to whether a centralized housing list or a housing operator needs to be used to tenant various affordable housing projects? And I'm just curious if that's something that is included in all of our affordable housing agreements or if it's just on an ad hoc basis?
It's, it's in the newer housing agreements. So it's not on, like, in the last few years, the housing agreements that have been done included that option kind of at district's choosing. So essentially it was positioned that if the housing society is ready to provide that service, that it could be up to the district to decide for development what service to use.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's interesting. I'll just make a brief comment on that because I think it really changes the visibility of the housing to our community. So I feel like there was a really differentiated experience with Sea and Sky that had 55 units that were below-market housing. But there wasn't really much visibility in community when those came online. Whereas when they came through the Artemis Building, for example, that was leased by Housing Squamish, there was more broad engagement with the community, acknowledgement that these were being made available and probably a larger pool of folks were able to apply. And so I think it's just something for us as the district, as these are the realization of the community amenities that we have achieved through development. How do we make sure that we're providing visibility and that like those are actually coming to fruition and that they are available for all, as opposed to just like what felt like kind of a developer project and developer availability in the Sea and Sky ones, for example? So it is something to consider.
Okay, thank you. I have Mayor Hertford next.
Thank you both for the presentation and for all the work throughout the year. My question's around the, sort of the document you provided with your annual report. It sort of has a section that to me feels like driven by your strategic plan. So I, and early on, we heard there was a, sort of one of the early stated goals was this unified access or how were that meant, waitlist, whatever that coordination looked like. And I've heard a little bit about in your presentation around, there we go, okay, around collaboration largely with Heem. So I understand that, that sort of assumption that that shared access list was meant to be a high party didn't, didn't play out that way. But how is that collaboration going with the other not-for-profits that are, that also have seats on the board and the other housing providers in community? And I guess up to date and, or to date and kind of going forward, what opportunities or challenges are there there?
Yeah, definitely. And the coordinated access list has not fallen off the strategic plan. So our strategic plan has four pillars. Pillar one is bringing housing to our community and that's obviously been a really big focus of the society in the last couple of years. But pillar two is coordinate access. So that is very important to our board. And we have a separate committee, used to be the Coordinated Access Committee, now it's the Property Operations Committee, but it's made up of representatives of the four community-serving organizations that also do provide housing, most of them. And we are really embracing this idea of trying to create a flow between the units that they manage into the units, other community-managed units in, either in our portfolio or in other portfolios. And this is really one thing that's really fantastic about PAH units, units that we're developing, is that even if we're sitting a little bit higher in the market or on the rent scale compared to homes maybe operated by Squamish Helping Hands or Pearl Space, folks who are becoming more stable and maybe entering the workforce can then move out of those homes into homes that we're operating or Sea and Sky or another provider and that creates flow that we really need. So that's a priority of ours. We had stayed away from the idea of a common access waitlist at the beginning just because we didn't have the units yet to really make that a real thing for the community and so didn't want to create that expectation without a reality. But now that we actually are developing a pipeline, this idea is really coming back to the forefront. And especially if we are successful in that application to Community Housing Fund, we're going to have 50 homes that are going to be rent geared to income, where we will definitely be prioritizing folks who are living in Partner Housing, Pearl Space, Squamish Helping Hands, Sea and Sky Community Services to be promoting that flow of housing. So that's part of our tenancy plan for that building and why that building is so important.
Thank you. I have councillor Petingle next.
Yeah, thanks. I recall, and the number may not be right, but at one time, I think I, we were talking about at 150 units owned, the housing society would be self-sufficient. I'm not sure that's the same story you're feeling today. I'm just wondering if you can speak to self-sufficiency or the plan or the vision or the experience there?
Yeah, so the business plan is still the same as presented to council last year. And it's very simple, which is as we bring units under management, either through acquisition or development, we're able to charge asset management or operations fees to those buildings and bring those back to cover core operations. We're able to charge asset management or operations fees to those buildings and bring those back to cover core operations. So it's really a matter of scale. The more units we bring under management, the more we're able to charge those fees, and then the more we can cover our own internal operations. Our modeling last year when we did our business planning found that that sweet spot is around 300 to 400 units. As we're starting to road test this, we're seeing that obviously the amount that we can charge individual properties depends on the amount of flexibility within each individual property budget. And depending on the program that it's funded through, that amount can be more or less. So we're starting to refine that plan. One year in, we're not making major changes, but next year, as we start to really solidify our development pipeline, we'll be taking another look at that business model. And we'll better understand what that point of scale is where we can really start covering our, our internal costs.
And then just a follow up related to staff, then if we are wanting to provide operating funding. With the changes in C A Cs, A C Cs, can, can you speak to, are either, both of those options for operational funding for this sort of thing? Or does it have to go into physical units of some sort?
Any contributions that go into our Affordable Housing Reserve could be, in the future, could be spent on, on supporting operations.
So anybody have any other questions?
I just have one of my own. You mentioned that, you know, all the good, good work you're doing for working families or working people, I should say, working households. And I was just wondering if you could elaborate on resources for people who are on disability, seniors, or people who otherwise are not working?
For sure. In terms of housing in particular? Yeah, so in our community right now, there are a small number of units that receive operating subsidies that allow folks who are on income assistance or disability to pay a reasonable amount of their rent to live in the community. And I'd say it's mostly operated by nonprofit providers. So West Winds is a great example where a portion of their homes are affordable to seniors who are on fixed incomes, obviously under one roof. And a portion of the portfolio operated by Sea and Sky Community Services is the same. Tantalus Manor, the units are deeply, deeply affordable. We just have two units that we're leasing up at 600 and 900 a month. So, and that's just because of the existing rents and our ability to finance that building and keep rents low. So the units are out there. I'd say they're limited and they are full. So, so the need, the need is definitely more than what's available.
Awesome. Thanks. Counselor Stoner?
Yeah, thank you. And to Counselor Greenlaw's question, can you clarify the like requirement around the 20 hours of working? Does that apply to something like Tantalus Manor? Or is that solely for units that we have secured through the perpetual affordable housing policy, which is a council or district policy?
District requirement only applies to units secured by the P A H policy because it's written in a housing agreement on title. We are, obviously, we only have Tantalus Manor outside our P A H portfolio. And units that are vacated in that building go first to H E M Housing. So we don't apply the workforce requirement in the same way.
And then just similarly on our P A H policy, if I remember correctly, is there an exception that for if you are retired but previously worked in the district, you're also eligible? Is that correct?
That is correct.
There is also a provision for folks who are on disability to get into the units too. And we've had at least one person come in that way.
Yeah, that's great. So Counselor, the other, oh, Mayor Hereford?
Sorry. My question is around the, the, I know that seats on board sometimes mean vacant. Has it been a challenge to, to engage someone that, for that seat that specifically for folks living in the, in the, in the units? And yeah, just, and should there be any? I guess I'm going towards, should there be any changes to that? Is that, is that been working or is that a, a challenge to fill that seat?
It's, it's been a challenge. I don't want to say it's been an insurmountable challenge. It is something that the board is reviewing right now to make sure that that requirement is an appropriate use of a person, of, of the time of a person with lived experience. Or if there's a better way to meet that intent of that, of that specific seat.
Okay, counsel, any more questions? Okay. Okay, Counselor, Mayor Hereford moves receipt. Counselor French seconds. Comments? Yeah, go for it.
Just thank you again for all the work. And if you could pass it on to the, the board and staff there as well. It is really quite remarkable what's been done so far and and without sounding sort of ominous, we're just getting started. Like I know that this, that you know, activity breeds activity and that there's a big momentum behind, behind this. And that's and even if we stop today and looked at the return on investment, it's quite, quite striking. So I know that that will just get amplified as the successes continue to be accumulated. And you start hitting those sort of critical mass numbers where a lot of the other pieces start sort of make, I guess, being easier to achieve with, with a larger number of, of units. So yeah, exciting times. And thank you so much for, for all the work and your time and patience today as well, as we work through our day. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson.
Yes, I'd just like to highlight, and I am hopeful I've written it down properly, a statement from Sarah Ellis. Quote, "Continue working with the District of Squamish on unlocking land and partnerships for housing," unquote. I just think that that should be emphasized. We should remind ourselves of that heavy lifting role that we will continue to have. Especially because Squamish, unlike other communities, in West River, for example, we don't have Crown land surrounding us that's available for housing. We have to be looking at Crown Agency land, and there are a couple of them that come up in our conversations that we should be ready to assist and facilitate deals, if you like. And also our relationships with private landowners. Important for us to cultivate those appropriately for the purpose of unlocking land for housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments? Counselor French?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. In supporting this motion, I want to express my gratitude and how grateful I am for the results that have been produced. And just piling on a little bit to what we've heard from previous speakers, I want to shine a light on the leveraging. The Society has taken the district contribution and turned it into something much larger. And for, for societies like this one, that's exactly what I'm looking for. And I think in a very short period of time, your group has written a playbook on how to do it. And I just see that continuing to happen.
Thank you, Counselor Stoner.
Yeah, thank you, through the chair. As I mentioned previously, I have the distinct pleasure of being counsel's appointee to this board. And it has been amazing to work along Sarah, the staff and the volunteer board that really puts in so much time and effort to make this organization work. It is very phenomenal how dedicated the folks are around the table. Housing is so fundamental to everything that it is that we do. And we know that the affordability crisis is one of the biggest challenges that many folks in our community are facing. And I do want to 100% applaud how much work has been done. It has been a huge amount of heavy lifting and there's lots of exciting things on the go. I also want to recognize and want my council colleagues and the community to know that I feel like, I'll be honest, when I say like a lot of the low hanging fruit has probably been picked or is close to having been picked. Like it's, it's actually going to get harder, not easier. And so that's where I actually think the comments from Counselor Anderson in terms of partnership, relationship building, doubling down on the, on the relationship that this Housing Society has with the district, council across with our development partners. To find creative ways to get us to that 300 number is going to require all hands on deck. And I know that everybody around the table, this table and the Housing Society table is up for the challenge. But it is going to be a challenge. I think it's important to recognize that it is about turning over every single stone, other orders of government. And finding all the different grants and partnerships that are out there. So I'm looking forward to continuing doing the work. I'm grateful that I got the support from my colleagues to be assigned to the task for another year to sit on the board. And we'll continue to try and find all the opportunities that are out there to build housing for our community. So thanks for all the work.
Counselor Petengill?
Yeah, just like to add my thanks and just, I guess, reinforce the, the thought. You know, we've heard about a lot of the great sort of direct work the Housing Society has done, but through our C A Cs and so on, there are a lot of additional below market units secured with, with housing agreements and more in, in the pipeline. And, and I know the Housing Society and the expertise there has played a part in that. There's, it sounds like some things we've learned in terms of centralized waitlists and so on. But I think this is sort of even what we're seeing here is just a piece of what's going on in housing. And so thanks staff and the Housing Society for, for, you know, a fairly, given our size, I think, a significant amount of progress on housing. It's never enough, but I think does deserve a good pat on the back. So thank you.
Okay, I'll just venture some comments of my own. It's always a pleasure to see you at this table. It's, it's just very impressive what you're able to do for our community. And it is such a desperate need in our community. I have friends who live in, in some of the housing that you're providing. And it's just such a relief to them to have security. You know, that's such a huge problem in our community. Affordability is one piece, but also the risk of losing any housing you can afford is, is another really important piece. And again, to see your returns on investment is incredibly impressive to leverage $1.5 million into $11 million is no small feat. And we really, and counting, is no small feat. And, and we really appreciate it, you know, like our Ms. Boxer was saying earlier today that we have 9% of the taxation income and 60% of the basically infrastructural costs. So for us to be able to invest that money in you and for you to flip it around like this is a huge deal for our community. And I just want, want you to know that you're very appreciated of the work your group is doing. So thank you very much for being here today. Okay, and with that, I'm going to be looking, we already did the, oh, yes, we're going to call the question. All in favor of receiving? There you go. Unanimous. And now I'm going to look for a motion to terminate.
I would like to move that we terminate this meeting.
Okay, seconded by Counselor Hamilton. Sorry, John, I let you hang in there. Okay, thanks. Oh, wait, all in favor?